Everybody, thank you for attending. Thank you to all the people who are attending electronically. This is the City of Waverly Study Session Meeting of the City Council. This is Monday, August 26, and this meeting is called to order. Would you join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Council, you have in front of you an agenda that has been developed for you. Is there a motion to approve?
I'm of approval if the agenda is presented.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? I hear none. You appear ready to vote. This is a voice vote. All those in favor say aye. And opposed, that passes unanimously. If you're keeping score at home, we are down by two. Dr. Rothie and Dr. Bergen are not with us tonight, but we are at quorum. And welcome back to Caleb Bowman. This is your last meeting. I'm sorry to say it'll probably be a short meeting, but it's nice to have you. We'll call on you at the end for comments. Now is the time for public comments on any item that is not on the agenda. Would anyone rise to speak to something that is not currently on the agenda? I see no one. We'll move on to the study session. Our calendar for tonight includes the annual report from Planning and Zoning Commission. I invite you to come forward. Please introduce yourselves.
Of course. Good evening, members of the council and Mr. Mayor. My name is David Larson. I'm the chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission for the City of Waverly here. And tonight, we're going to go through the annual review. You should have had it in your agenda packet. And we'll get started. So basically, I'll go over a brief introduction, talk about our commissioners, really just kind of get into the meat of the council update. Couple of things we want to spotlight, and then, of course, time for questions for any of you guys on what we've been doing and what we have for you tonight. So with that introduction, just kind of what we do. You know, the Planning and Zoning Commission serves in advisory capacity to the city council. So members are appointed by the mayor, approved by you, the council. So we're responsible really for land use issues. That's what we remind ourselves when we have our meetings, which are the second...
First Thursday.
First Thursday, sorry, I should know better, of every month. So basically, you know, land use issues related to subdivision development, general planning, city development, and zoning. And then we make recommendations to the city council for final action on those issues. And then we do special provisional use items for the Board of Adjustment for kind of the exceptions. Commissioners. So if you look at this slide, it's really the team, right? Who's on the commission, what their terms are. Myself is chairperson. John Myers is our vice-chairperson. Then the rest of our team, and when their terms expire. So we have a mix of people around the community as well. So if you kind of look at the map, we're spread out over the area a little bit. We're not all central to any one particular spot. And then, of course, much thanks and many support. Much support's given to us here by Paige and then Kate as well. She's joined the group for some of the administrative work. And then Brian, of course, has joined us as our council member liaison. So just briefly here, timeline, so kind of where we were. So the last time I was here was in 2023. We gave the August council update of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This past August is also when Kate joined us. January kind of rounds out 2023. That's when Brian joined. His appointment as council liaison. And then kind of just zooming into 2024, what have we been up to here just from a timeline? There was a planning and zoning workshop that the city supported. Couple of our commission members went and were able to attend that. That was put on by Iowa State Extension, I believe. I did not join that, but hope to sometime in the future. May timeframe, that's when we do officer elections. This is my second term, second time in front of you guys. So returning with this update, of course. And that's also timeline-wise, and I'll highlight this again later, that's when the Stone Meadows subdivision passed through our group. And, you know, just kind of as a positive note, you know, that's a good addition to the city, we felt. So we're going to highlight that a little bit more tonight. And then here we are in August again for this update that we're giving tonight. All right, so two terms. I have a couple, a couple of years of data here. So my summary of what this means, kind of just, just as it goes, I just looked at all of our notes in the last couple of years and what we've been up to and what does this kind of reflect and tell me? I would kind of direct you to the rezoning and the platte survey bars. So kind of middle of the graph and bottom of the graph. So 2023 is in blue, 2024 is in green. So what you see is an increase on both of those. So that, I think, kind of relates to the activity that we see around the area where there is more building happening this year than there was last year. By rezoning, it doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be a new house, but it's development, it's work, it's change. It shows growth, in my opinion. So I think that rezoning and that platte survey increases over the last year shows that. I would also highlight the special provisional use. You see, that went down from 2023 to 2024. My thoughts on that, and really the meat and potatoes behind that, is we made a change to the solar panel code and moved it from special provisional use required for roof-mounted units into just a regular code, no Board of Adjustment requirements for that. And that really dropped. We were seeing so many of those. That really shows that was a good change. It dropped the amount of special provisional uses that we had come through our commission and again through you into the regular code as we go forward. Next slide is really just kind of getting near the end here of my update for you is a spotlight on some things we need. So the first one here is an ask. So we run across, and we had one just this last month, where we have requests from the county of rezoning. Sometimes it's a platte survey within the two-mile agreement. Now, there is no current two-mile agreement with the city and Bremer County. So that expired some time ago. The county really does a good job of still reaching out, bringing it in front of our commission, even though there's no written obligation for them to do so. So it's something I would ask just you guys to take a look at, just for some action here. It's something that I think would be good to have in place as we go forward. And I think there's a partnership with Bremer County there as well, so. Second item there, tonight is, like I said earlier, the Stone Meadows subdivision. That's 58 building lots, I believe. That construction is underway. See, it's the one behind True Value there. Looks like it's coming along well. Again, it's a good, good thing. We wanted to highlight that it came through our commission and, of course, through you guys as well. And then lastly here is kind of a multi-phase one. But as I understand it, there's an overall update to city code in process. We're working on our particular sections, providing feedback, trying to get some clarifications of just things that aren't maybe current, things that are duplicated in certain areas. We spent a good amount of time reviewing the special provisional use language in the code. I think we made some good clarifications there as those come through. We also spent some time earlier in the year reviewing wood furnaces. So these would be external or outdoor wood furnace units. We didn't take any action on that, so that currently still prohibits those from being used within the city. But we did have a citizen that was interested in one, and we spent some time reviewing some similar codes. And we had some good discussion on that, but again, took no action at this time. And then currently, we're reviewing the code language for outdoor swimming pools. So I'll leave it as something that is ongoing for us. We've, we've had an opportunity to look at a few. It sounds like some of those are coming up in the community as an upcoming issue, maybe issues of business, thing that we want to make sure we have some, some good clarification to make the process more clear for the citizens of the community. And with that, we can go to questions.
Counsel, do you have any questions?
I guess I wasn't aware that the two-mile agreement with the county had expired. How long have we been going without an agreement with them?
So I don't know the exact date. I don't want to put Paige on the spot either, but...
Are we talking months? Are we talking years?
Years.
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 Wow.
Yeah, 10-plus, I think. Yeah, at least. So, sometime, yeah. So, so yeah, again, you know, I think, I don't want to shed any bad light on the county by any means here. I mean, they certainly have reached out and done their part to reach, brought it through the commission either way. And like I said, I feel there's a strong partnership there, but there's no, there's no written obligation for them to do so. So it is something that probably should be looked at, addressed, I think.
I don't have a question, but just wanted to comment that these updates are really helpful to me because I previously was very naive about how much P&amp;Z does. And I think you guys' work is, is really important, and the commission does a good job of it.
Good. I'll share that with our other commission members. Thank you. Other questions, comments?
Anything else, counsel? Thank you so much for your report.
Yes, thank you.
We'll move on to item two then, on our study session calendar. There's an update on Resolution 24-146. I'll ask James to bring us up to speed.
Sure. For council's discussion, meetings ago, we were set to look at doing a traffic study on 10th up till it becomes a parkway. So Justin McGlaughlin and I have been in contact with a couple of different firms. We talked through it with our internal engineering firm that we use, Bolton and May. I also went to Schneider, who does a lot of these. And the cost is about $7,000, just a hair under that, which is about what they're running now. But both of them thought it was a terrible time to do it with the detour happening on that road from the DOT. They think it will taint the information and bias it one way or the other, and you won't get a true read of it. So I just want to bring it up to speed. Those are the comments that we're hearing. What I don't want to do is have this done, traffic returns to normal, and then you do have to do another one because you want to change it again or put it back. Otherwise, we could do one on Cedar Lane as well, because that traffic is picked up. I'm sure Pete can attest to. But we're not doing that. So I have no problem doing this study. It's the timing of it that I think is going to be the issue. I don't want to spend $7,000 on a study that's not going to give you the information you're wanting. So that is the information I wanted to bring to you. I'm looking for your comments, your questions, anything like that. I would prefer to do it when the project is finished and traffic returns to what has normally been in the past to truly determine what it's going to be going forward.
Counsel, you have any comments?
That makes sense to me. That makes sense to me, too. So I was thinking about this. I'm, I'm wondering if the DOT would even have some input about changing the, the speed limit at this juncture where we're just starting with the, the bridge closure.
They would consider it, but I don't think it's something you just can go do. There is a long conversation with the DOT and if they'd allow it or not, because that is now their highway until this project is finished. So that was discussed as well. I think they allow it. The study would denote it, but it's something you'd want to definitely get more involved in with them.
I feel there's a consensus. There's no opportunity to vote tonight, but I feel we have a consensus. Is that true?
I would agree with that. I, I think it's not the responsible use of city funds to spend that kind of money right now when it seems pretty clear from the experts that it's not going to be accurate or appropriately timed data. I think that as, as our responsibility to the public that we need to be mindful that we do take it up again for discussion after the project is done.
Absolutely. That's the entire intent. We've been ordered to do so. It's just a timing question.
Okay, ready to move on?
Yes, sir.
Word IMF, reports from the boards and commissions. Any comments, questions, or issues with that? I did note that the golf course commission reminds us they opened the golf course in February this year. So I'm looking for some good numbers from them. Anything else? James, staff updates? If you would, gentlemen.
Just a quick reminder, with a Labor Day holiday coming up, there will be a double route on Tuesday, September 3rd. That would be pickup of garbage and recycling. Just quick notes.
The staff doesn't have any more, sir, but there's a couple of things I just want to comment on. If you haven't noticed, they're taking a bridge out across the river. Some people are talking about it.
Yeah.
Apparently, it's an issue out there for a lot of people. And unfortunately, there's a lot of information being put out there also about our referendums that are coming up. So it's not the only topic that you're hearing, information about good, bad, and indifferent. So I just wanted to clarify some of the things that we're talking about. We talked about the referendum for the pool and for the golf course clubhouse as well. The bonds that we are going to issue are 15 years in length. We'd love to have done 10. I prefer 10. 10 is a huge lift with the amount of money we're possibly talking about here. It simply does not work financially for us to do it. 20 was way too long, I thought, for what we were doing. That's not something I'd want to do either. So we're going to sit at 15 years. And so when we put the numbers out that have been out there in the public, you know, it's $95 for the impact per 100,000 of assessed value residential. I know it's a mouthful. And it's $56 for the golf course, $95 is for the pool. Those are built on the worst possible case scenario as we look at this. Now, we need people to understand that. That does not factor in any of the local option sales tax, which we've talked about before. That's why we had to vote last fall to use some of that funding towards these projects. That worst-case scenario year is actually year six of the 15. It's not the first year. First-year projections, based on Spear's data, would be closer to 30 for the golf course and about 44 for the pool. That would be first year. So when you build these 15 years out, you have to look at how much your principal's going to be, what your interest is going to be. We looked at what can we afford to not raise up the debt levy. Something severe, still going to go up. What does it all look like? And then in the sixth year, the ball diamonds fall off on local option sales tax. You can possibly, if you choose to as a council, implement around $600,000 towards these projects, which is what reduces them down from the numbers that are out there. So if in year six, you decide to do that, and this is assuming zero growth through this process. We do not want to get crazy with our numbers. We're going to grow and grow, and it's going to lessen it. No growth at all from where we are now. Those numbers would be $30 in year six for the golf course and about $69 for the pool. And that is incorporating into the local option sales tax. So a part of how we do that, Dan, is we layer that in the best we can fit you, your bigger part, when the other falls off, and that's what's been done in this case. The reason we can't show that that way is because you may, or your predecessors later may decide, we don't want to spend that on it. We're going to tax for the whole thing. Well, then that's what those numbers are initially, 95 and 56. If you follow the plan we've put out from the start of this process that we had the vote on, then those numbers will drop, as I said, in the sixth year down to 30 and 69. So again, that's the sixth year of the 15. In year eight, you can recall them back and refinance them down and get better interest rates lower, which I think it will be. So there's a lot of upside to what we're putting out there. We had to put out the worst possible case scenario on this, just so we're protected. Even when we've talked about the numbers, they are higher than we think we're going to need. But if something happens, you don't want to be short, and then you stop the project. So when people are considering what they're going to do, we wanted to get the facts out there that that is what it looks like. 15-year bond, we're assuming no growth because there are years that's going to happen. You can refinance them at eight, but it's the sixth year that that large number will hit, not the first year. First year is much lower. And if we use local option sales tax, as we intend to, the numbers are definitely less. I just cannot officially put that out there because it leaves your decision at that point in time whether you do it or not. All I can guarantee is that if we had to tax for it, 100%, this is what it would look like. So I don't know if you have any questions, comments. I know it's a public, like, meeting, but that's the update I wanted to give you just because some of the confusion that's outlying. Those are the numbers that we're looking at as we go forward.
Just wanted to, you said assessed value?
Assessed.
Is that taxable?
Assessed.
So...
Per 100,000 of assessed.
I have a $200,000 house. The rollback, I'm only getting taxed on 100,000, but I'm, this would be on the 200,000.
On the assessed, yes.
So I have to go for the double.
Correct. Yep, that is per 100,000 of assessed residential property. The confusing part, which I always enjoy to state doing this as well, when they put the bills out to everybody, they use the first 100,000 for commercial industrial. Well, the ruling across the state for business tax, the first 150,000 is the same as the rollback for residential. So it looks like that doesn't change either. Well, that's not true because after 150,000, it goes up quite a bit. So had they been thinking it through, they might have done maybe 250, 300,000 instead to see the difference, but they didn't. So it's also going to be confusing when people see a much larger bill on the commercial industrial side because what they saw in their sheets that were sent out from the state is not accurate after $100,000. So again, all this stuff blends into a whole lot of, ugh, and that's what you're seeing out there. So we want to clarify numbers as they sit. This is from Spear Financial working through this. The bond attorneys let us know what will and won't work. And that's about a 4%, 5% interest rate, since that's what we're hoping we can attain. And so if rates continue to drop anyway, by the time we would do this next spring, if the public allows us, they may be better interest to start with. So that's a long update. Appreciate you sitting through. That is kind of what we want to get out there, is those are the actual numbers we're looking at based on the best knowledge we have today, if things go as we predict.
Could you go over year six again, just a little more?
Yes, sir. So year six, we picked the worst year of the 15. So we have an estimate for every year, 1 through 15, what it's going to cost on that year. And that's the amount of, you know, each year your taxes come out. That little piece of tax is going to be this dollar amount roughly per 100,000. In year six, that's where we established a $95 for the pool and the $56 for the golf course. That is the highest year of the 15. That's also the year we could factor in local option sales tax that we've always talked about and anticipated doing. If that is successful and we do put in local option sales tax, as I said, the ball diamonds fall off, that drops it down to $30.16, if you want the cents, and $69 instead of 56 and 95. So it is a substantial drop because it's about a $600,000 payment that would take off the debt. That's what we're currently going to use in that last year of the diamonds. So we didn't strip down our local option sales tax for other things we use it for, didn't gut it trying to pay this upfront. This allows us to fall back in behind the bond that's paying off the parkway. Part of that was local option sales tax, part of that was TIF. So that bond is paid off in five years, which seems ridiculous. It seems like we just did that. The next year, it's the end of the ball diamonds, then you get into this. And so it blends in to where you don't see these huge ups and downs. It's as if it stayed the same the whole way out. That's the point of how you manage your debt. So we affronted a smaller amount. We will backload this midway through. But year six will be the pivotable year. And then again, year eight, we'll be able to refinance possibly down if the interest makes sense. Does that answer your question, Brett?
Absolutely.
All right.
Thank you.
You bet.
I have a question and I don't want to go too far down the rabbit hole.
Sure.
Tell me no answer, but I've had questions from some citizens about will there be some private fundraising? And if there were to be organizations that form or come forward or whatever and say, we want to do some fundraising for either of these projects, then how is that applied or how does that affect...
Borrow less based on the contributions that are received or the contributions that are predicted to be received. You would not borrow as much money then to need it.
So it's established at the beginning.
It is.
Thank you.
And so if the votes are positive and people in the public want to move forward with this, then we would look at, do we fundraise or do we not? The problem with fundraising for like a pool or something like that takes a long time. People are impatient. They want this pool now. I don't know if they'll wait for that long to go after a CAT grant, which you have to have two-thirds of your funding in place and sitting there waiting, which we don't do. We spend our money as we get it as we move along this project. So it's hard to fundraise when people want it right now because they don't want to wait. They don't want to wait. And so that's going to make it difficult. But I think there are some items that could definitely be fundraised or are not included unless they're fundraised. All that can happen once we know what the outcome is in November.
Thank you.
You're welcome, Neil.
I just hope that our friends on Facebook and media have, have heard this. Published numbers are the worst-case scenario.
Absolutely.
It could very well come in much better, but that's how we have to play this game.
It's the easiest way to put it out there without any surprises, except for the good surprises, what you're less on, what you thought. We certainly don't want to go the other way, so.
Right.
That's all I have tonight, sir.
Thank you very much. Counsel, comments? Counselperson Jones.
Oh, just in keeping with what James was talking about. This is how cities grow, is passing bonds. Think about our predecessors passing bonds, paying for things that we have in our community now. And these are long-term projects, 50, 60, 70-year projects. And just, I hope people keep that in mind. If we want Waverly to progress, we need to step up to the plate and, and back these items. I'm sure we'll talk more about it.
Yes, sir.
Counselperson Myers. Counselperson Kengus.
Well, I don't want to step on Counselperson Wolf's toes on this, but Wednesday night, we're having a, the city is holding a welcome party for the Whorfburg International students. And that is 6...
I believe.
5:30? That would be, council would certainly be invited to come and welcome our new students into the community from overseas.
Great. And happy first week of school to you and Amy and all the educators and students who are out there. Counselperson Draco.
Nothing tonight. Thank you. Don't look so shocked.
Counselperson Wolf.
I just, same thing with Brent Jones, is it for investing in Waverly. And I just wanted to say thank you for those comments. I will be at Get Roasted from 11 to 12:30 tomorrow for any council business.
Thank you. Visiting Counselperson Bowman.
I wanted to say thank you to all the businesses in town who supported the school staff in the first week of being back at work. It was really nice to have meals provided for us, and I appreciated the welcome from the community that way, too. Thank you.
Good. Thank you and welcome. I have a lot. First, I know, not from personal experience, but I hear that it's really fun to go running on Lover's Lane or walking your pet or team practice, you know? It's obvious I have not personally run on Lover's Lane. But, you know, friends, let's just consider not doing that for a while because the traffic is heavy and we do have, to my surprise, we got semis going down Lover's Lane. And you know what? We have lots of sidewalks in town, and we've got a really great rail trail. So I'm inviting the more athletic people in our community and I'm inviting our coaches to think about not running or walking on Lover's Lane until this project is done because it's just not as safe as it was. That's just the truth. I want people to know that we are working... I want people to know that we are working in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and the Iowa Department of Transportation on signage. We know the signage can be better. There are signs up, put up by our friends over at Chamber. There are more signs coming. I've saw them with my own eyes. I know they're there. I know that city is doing their thing, and we are negotiating with IDOT to get more indifferent signage. Correct me if I'm wrong, Justin, but I think the thing that I heard tonight that really excited me is changing the sign from "road is out" to "bridge is out" to indicate that you can go downtown and shop. And, you know, the Chamber has distributed 1,200 maps of how to get to the downtown stores. So it's the three of us. We're all working together. We're trying really hard to make this as easy as possible, which is not to say it's going to be easy, but easy as possible. Third, I'm listening to a biography of Thomas Jefferson right now, and I'm to that part where they're buying the Louisiana Purchase. And they negotiated with Napoleon Bonaparte down to three cents an acre to double the size of the country and to keep Spain and France from, you know, taking half our country, right? There were people then who said it's too expensive and we shouldn't pay the taxes and we don't need, you know, Louisiana and all of that territory. They objected then that it's just too much, but a little historical perspective, that was one of the most important deals in American history. I think that talks to the pool and the clubhouse. You know, these are the days to make big decisions that will be really important to this town for another 100 years. So let's not make these decisions flippantly, but remember, this is the pool our great-grandkids will swim in. There will be no city council next Monday. It's a federal holiday. So we'll be meeting on the second, third, and fourth Mondays in September. Okay. The last of the mayor's comments is, Waverly, be kind. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Will we adjourn?
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.